Legislative Day number ten will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of solid meditation. I will now call upon Councilwoman Bevins to lead us into the ladies and gentlemen. Is there a motion to approve the journal for the meeting of May third?
Second.
As we move to the second in our favor, I find Oz have it. The journal is approved. Enrollment bills, Bills twenty-nine dash twenty-one, thirty dash twenty-one, thirty-one dash twenty-one, thirty-two dash twenty-one, thirty-three dash twenty-one, thirty-four dash twenty-one, thirty-five dash twenty-one, thirty-six dash thirty-one, twenty-one, thirty-seven dash twenty-one were passed by the council and signed by executives and hereby enrobed. Now, start with our budget message. Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the county council's, uh, adoption of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Baltimore County budget. Especially everyone watching this, leading via live stream, and everyone from the county agencies, CCBC and BCPS can appear as we gather in person for just the second time in over a year in the county council chamber. We've been here for the first time in over a year for the county executive presentation of the FY twenty-twenty-two budget last month, and we are very happy to be here again. Although we have these plexiglass walls between us, it feels great to be here in person with my council colleagues. This is the second time I've been elected chair of the county council. I last served as a chair in two thousand and eighteen, and I want to thank each of my colleagues for your support and for allowing me to be the steward of the legislative branch for another year. It is amazing how things can change from year to year. As I delivered today's to give some context, the where we are now. The last time I delivered this budget message, three years ago, we faced very difficult and uncertain times. We were mourning the untimely death of my friend, county executive Captain Camus, and had just lost Amy Caprio, Officer Amy Caprio, who died on the line of duty. We also faced a very uncertain and potentially bleak financial future. We had maxed out the credit card. It seemed like we were borrowing from Peter to pay Paul to fund, uh, renovated schools and new schools. We also faced a growing structural deficit. A year later, in two thousand and nineteen, the new administration took the difficult but necessary step to increase county revenues by proposing an income tax cap increase, which was the first time in a generation. We recognized the executive branches' dilemma, and although it was a very tough pill to swallow, the council improved the increases. Moving ahead to twenty-twenty, the county was again faced with extremely difficult and uncertain times as we experienced the effects of the worst global pandemic. Beginning in March twenty-twenty, COVID-nineteen paralyzed the entire world and resulted in tremendous losses, both economically and most importantly, in lives lost. It is hard to imagine that in the past year, we lived in a way that is so vastly different from what we were used to. Early on, we were told to stay home, work from our homes. We could not move about as freely as before. We could not attend church or hold other events in person. We curtailed many of the freedoms we take for granted and started wearing protective masks in order to save lives. We could not see friends or family members in person. In addition, jobs were faced with losing. In addition, so many people lost their jobs and were faced with losing their homes or being evicted. Non-essential businesses were forced to close. Sports and recreations came to an abrupt halt. Airports closed and flights were canceled for parts of last year. COVID-nineteen, COVID-nineteen also took lives. When a colleague, when a, when my colleague, Councilwoman Bevins, gave this message a year ago, Baltimore County had reported fifty-six-hundred-seventy-eight known cases and three hundred and eight people from all the county had died from the coronavirus. To date, we have had over sixty-five thousand reported cases, and nearly fifteen hundred people have died from COVID-nineteen in Baltimore County. It could have been much worse, but those are still truly sobering statistics. Looking back to last year, we also faced a FY twenty-twenty-one budget that had so many more questions than answers. We really didn't know whether the economic effects of the pandemic would set the county back years, or if we could weather this storm and keep the county headed in the right direction. No doubt, our leadership was tested, but my colleagues and I and the administration responded. This time last year, the council had legitimate concerns that the county revenues would fall short and would not be enough to fund the much-needed county services that our residents deserve and have come to expect, and would perhaps require us to lay off works. In fact, the council had some of the most difficult budget decisions the county has ever known. There was not a question of whether there would be cuts to the budget, rather the issue was how much. To their credit, the administration officials also recognized the budget that they put together and presented as the pandemic begun to unfold needed to be revisited and pared down. We did not look forward to the prospect of making cuts in a vacuum, and we worked with the administration to find areas that could be reduced. Ultimately, the council made historic cuts and adopted a FY twenty-twenty-one budget that reduced spending by almost sixty million dollars. We did this out of an abundance of caution, so we could fund the basic and core services of government while also ensuring the long-term stability of the county's finances. As the pandemic began to take hold during the spring and summer, although brick-and-mortar officers were closed, county government continued to operate and deliver for our residents. Working with the administration, this council used its legislative power and took swift action to help people. We passed more emergency legislation than ever before, appropriating an initial ten million dollars in federal grant funding and another ten million dollars in state funding to help the administration provide aid to the residents that were hardest hit by the pandemic. We approved legislation to streamline and reduce the red tape associated with donations and gifts received by the county in connection with the pandemic, so these resources could be released as quickly as possible to, to those in need. The council also approved the appropriation of one hundred and forty-four million dollars in federal donor virus relief aid. This appropriation gave the administration the funds it needed to offset the huge expenses attributable to COVID-nineteen, including masks, gloves, hazmat suits, hand sanitizer, hand sanitizers, and masks, boxed meals, refrigerated trailers and trucks, food distribution sites, and COVID testing sites, to name a few. We also approved tens of millions of dollars in appropriations to provide rental assistance, food assistance, and grants for small businesses, including restaurants, hotels, and motels, some of the industries hit hardest by the pandemic. As we put twenty-twenty in the rearview mirror and are five months into twenty-twenty-one, fortunately, the outlook is much better than it was a year ago. We still have a ways to go, and it is hard to know when or if COVID-nineteen will be out of our lives for good. Part of the new normal is still virtual meetings from a computer, and that favorite phrase that we all know, "You are muted." But there are signs that we are moving forward. After being in limited supply during the first part of this year, the much anticipated vaccines are now more available than ever to any adult or teenager that want it. And let me be very clear, everyone should want it and get it. We've gotten to a point where you don't even need an appointment. Just walk in and get the shot, is that simple. We've also reached a point where children aged twelve to seventeen can now get the vaccine. This is truly remarkable when you think about where we were a year ago, or even just six months ago. It is a tribute to the companies and their research scientists who have gotten the vaccines out so quickly and safely, and our federal, state, and county health professionals. In fact, I want to take this opportunity to thank the great Dr. Gregory Branch, the county's health officer and the director of Health and Human Services. Dr. Branch and his incredible staff have been true heroes during this pandemic. He has been the face of the county's COVID health response and has coordinated and managed a well-oiled machine from initial outreach last year so people knew how best to deal with the virus, to testing, and now to full-scale vaccinations. He and his staff has not missed a beat. From the beginning, the county offered COVID testing at sites in Dundalk, Lansdowne, Randalls Town, Windsor Mill, and Timonium. Since the vaccine became available, the county has been operating mass vaccination clinics in Timonium, Randalls Town, and Essex, has hosted community clinics and underserved communities, has launched mobile vaccination clinics, has created a program to schedule and cover the cost of Uber rides for residents without transportation options, and has deployed teams to administer vaccines directly to homebound residents. In fact, I can speak about my own experience in giving praise to Dr. Branch's team. I have visited the county sites a number of times, having been tested several times, and having taken my eighty-five-year-old mother for her two vaccine shots and me for my shots. Every experience was better than the one before, with very short lines and very courteous and caring people looking after us. Dr. Branch, to you and your staff, thank you so very, very much. In Baltimore County, we have over three hundred and thirty-six thousand people that have been fully vaccinated, and that is one number we hope will continue to increase. On the, on the other hand, we are seeing other numbers go down and showing real signs of COVID-nineteen health recovery. The county's positivity rate is below two percent. Hospitalizations are down, and thank goodness fewer and fewer people are dying from the virus. The vaccine and our diligence are working. Another encouraging sign was the county executive's announcement a few weeks ago that Baltimore County had joined the state in lifting all restrictions, including capacity restrictions on indoor and outdoor venues and indoor and outdoor dining effective Saturday, May fifteenth. The mask requirements for certain indoor establishments remain in effect, but that only makes sense as we continue to push for people to get vaccinated. So please, keep that mask handy with you when you're inside public buildings, airports, schools, and businesses that have decided to keep the mask requirement for a while longer. During the past month, my colleagues and I have done what we always do this time of year. With the help of the county's auditor's office, we have pored over the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget and looked at how county departments and other offices intend to spend hard-earned taxpayer dollars. This year, based on the tone of our budget deliberations last week, I can speak for all my council colleagues when I say that the budget submitted by the administration is a very sound and responsible budget. So today, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we adopt a total operating budget of three-point-nine billion dollars, which includes a general fund budget of two-point-three billion dollars and a capital budget of five hundred and twenty-three million dollars. What is noteworthy about this year's budget is that for the first time in recent memory, during our deliberations, none of us on this council recommended any cuts to the budget. Believe me, this is not because we agree with every aspect of the administration's budget decisions and not because we decided to rubber stamp the budget the county executive presented to us last month. In fact, it is a more recognition that the steps the executive and legislative branches have taken in the last few years to improve and stabilize the county's finances have paid off and, and have now given us the resources to provide funding for proj, for projects that we could not afford previously. It also shows a confidence in the administration that incoming COVID-nineteen relief monies will be spent wisely. Make no mistake, we don't always agree on policy, but unlike in Washington, D.C. and other places, we don't get bogged down by politics. We try to work hard regardless of political party and achieve consensus. We would much rather get things done for the people we represent. The adoption of this budget as submitted by the administration is a big step in that direction. It also, it is also noteworthy that the budget we approved today is three-point-eight-five million dollars below the spending affordability guidelines and results in a projected rainy day fund surplus at the end of FY twenty-two of two-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars, which is a healthy thirteen percent of estimated to, total revenues. The budget we adopt today fully funds the operating budget of the county agencies and signals an aggressive pursuit of capital projects all over the county. Five hundred and twenty-three million dollars in capital projects are representative of the county's solid financial footing and are the type of investments that will have lasting results. Another example is the county maintaining a triple-A bond rating from all three major rating agencies. This is a great testament to the county's overall credit worthiness. This rating makes Baltimore County one of only forty-nine counties nationwide that receive the highest rating from the three rating agencies. To put this in perspective, there are over thirty-one hundred counties in the United States, which puts Baltimore County in the top one-point-five percent. After everything we've been through the last few years, this is truly an outstanding achievement. The capital budget includes two-hundred-and-four million dollars in school construction for projects such as the Lansdowne High replacement, Scott's Branch Elementary renovation and addition, the Dundalk High School, uh, addition design, Summit Park Elementary and Red House Run Elementary replacements, and includes ninety-three million dollars in capital building projects for the Spurs Point Fire Station and Police Station at Trade Point Atlantic, the Wilkins Police Precinct replacement, the Woodlawn Senior Center expansion, and renovations, and renovations a new North County Senior Center, the Rice's Town Sports Complex expansion, improvements to the Randalls Town Library, and land acquisition for the new Catonsville Fire Station. The capital budget includes seventy-six million dollars in recreation and parks projects, highlighted by the Greens Lane Park Design and Construction, creating the county's first steam center. I like that. Spurs Point Park construction at Trade Point Atlantic, Oregon Ridge, Com, Fromwell Valley, Rockdale, Diamond Ridge, and Fleming Park enhancements, Beerman Property Park, site planning, and countywide athletic field construction, renovation, and maintenance projects. We approve twenty-seven million dollars in waterway improvements for stream restoration, watershed and stormwater restoration, and sustainability projects. Over twenty-two million dollars for various community college maintenance and renovations at all three campuses, and thirteen million dollars for community improvements such as the Dundalk Heritage Trail and Park, the Pikesville Armory redevelopment, and the new neglected property community fund. In fact, we will be considering Bill forty-three dash twenty-one later in this session, which will create the fund to provide local financial assistance to bring neglected properties into compliance with county code requirements. These are no more, these are by no means every project in the pipeline. Just a few examples of the county, of what the county is doing with the federal gov, which the federal governments keep talking about, investing in our infrastructure and supporting capital projects that will make all of our lives better for many years to come. To put this quite simply, we're, we are investing in our future. The budget we adopt today also represents our support of our public safety institutions. We fully fund our corrections department, nine-one-one operations center, sheriff, the fire department, and the police department. As I speak about public safety, it is also important to mention that last fall, during the civil unrest that took place all over the country, over the issues of inequitable policing, we took a hard look at what might have needed, what may have been needed here in Baltimore County. We wanted to make a great police force even better, to make officers and policing more accountable, but also not to take away their ability to do their job. In the end, we listened to residents with different backgrounds and demographics from all over the county, and we worked with the police department, state's attorneys' office, and the police union. We passed legislation that banned chokeholds, enhances the department's ability to train its officers in best practices such as de-escalation techniques, requires intervention by fellow officers to stop the use of excessive force, and keeps us all safe. I want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the men and women that make up the police department. Theirs is a very difficult job, and we pray for their safety each and every day, and those with whom they may interact with. Also want to recognize the brave and heroic officers who several weeks ago neutralized a deranged killer on Mary Road in Windsor Mill, who set his house ablaze, killed four people, and surely would have killed more had it not been for the quick and heroic actions of our Baltimore County police officers. I now want to turn to education. Today, we approved the full appropriations to BCPS and CCBC, including to their capital projects. I want to thank Dr. Kurt Nidus for her nationally-recognized leadership of our community college, perhaps the best value in undergraduate education in the country. CCBC is preparing students for four-year colleges. CCBC is preparing students for four-year colleges or using their associate degrees to secure good, well-paying jobs. This has been a very difficult year for our public school system. When the pandemic began in the spring of last year and BCPS had to close schools, the dominoes that fell were widespread. In-person learning eventually gave way to quickly develop online instruction. Sports and other after-school programs were forced to end prematurely. Proms were canceled, in-person graduations were canceled, and BCPS had to plan for the very real possibility that classes would not resume in person when classes began after the summer. It was a daunting challenge, and the possibility became reality when the pandemic continued and classes were forced to resume remotely and online last year or last fall. To make their situation even more challenging, BCPS was subjected to a ransomware attack just before Thanksgiving. Although BCPS did very well to restore some of their systems quickly and resume classes in less than a week, we still didn't completely know the results of the attack or how badly their systems may have been damaged. We are very supportive of BCPS and their efforts. But over the last several months, it's no secret that this council has been critical of BCPS's leadership. My colleagues have been attentive to the phone calls and emails received from some parents who say their children struggled with remote instruction. We have also been frustrated by the lack of communication from the school system related to the ransomware attack, mainly because we allocate almost half of the county's budget to the school system, but BCPS and the Board of Education are basically a state agency. We are compelled by state law to fund BCPS at the maintenance of effort, which is greatly a level at the least which is generally a level that at least meets or exceeds a previous year's funding. We accept this responsibility even though we have very little say in terms of accountability. On a more positive note, my council colleagues and I are gratified that last week the Board of Education voted to expand the in-person learning option for students in middle and high schools by allowing students the option to attend classes in person four days a week beginning this past Monday. We were also happy to hear that BCPS will implement both in-person and virtual summer instruction programs. It is also our sincere hope that the council's decision to fully fund BCPS signals clearly that we will continue to work with BCPS going forward and have good collaborative relationships with Superintendent Williams and Board Chair Makita Scott. This results in funding thirty million dollars above the maintenance of effort level and a total funding increase of one hundred and ninety-two million dollars, which is ten percent over last year's budget. Working together will not only benefit teachers, administrators, and parents, but mostly our students. I now want to speak about several other county agencies. This council has been very impressed with the administration's work to improve the county's transportation system. Earlier this month, we approved legislation that changed the name of the Department of Public Works to the Department of Public Works and Transportation. For a number of years, the council has struggled or suggested the need for the Department of Public Works to have a more formalized transportation focus. And we are gratified the administration offered this change to reflect an official transportation mission. We believe the acting director has been a problem solver. The Andrea Walker's team is among the finest in the state, and we want this spirit to continue. When confronted with difficult traffic situations, we support the department looking at alternatives that perhaps have been successful in other jurisdictions. In general, our constituents support more traffic calming, better connections, expanded biking paths, and a robust, comprehensive vision to transportation. This is also the newly established Department of Housing and Community Development. Similar to Public Works, the council approved legislation earlier this month to create this new department in county government. Functions related to housing that were previously fragmented in other county agencies are now being consolidated into one agency. What was evident prior to the pandemic but became absolutely confirmed during the pandemic is that the county needed a centralized department that would coordinate and advocate for housing and community development-related policies, as well as secure and administer loans, grants, proposals, and create programs to provide affordable housing and related supportive services to county residents. Terry Hickey and his team have done a remarkable job performing these services over the last year in the most difficult of circumstances. And we are confident that having all the housing functions under one roof will make his team even more effective going forward. Also want to mention the inspector general's office. I am sure someone is aware that several members of the council, myself included, had some pointed questions and discussions with the inspector general during the office budget hearing. But I think we're all on the same mindset that we completely support the mission of the office of inspector to investigate potential fraud, waste, and misconduct, and to advise the council and executive when the office believes there are policies in county government that could be improved or more efficient. As with any agency, I am concerned about oversight and accountability. I agree with the administration that the council identified gaps in the current law, and we should work in partnership with the executive to address these issues that were raised last week. During the budget hearings and our deliberations, a number of other special issues came to our attention that warrant brief comment. These comments are set forth in Section Four of this budget message. As I conclude this budget message, I want to thank my colleagues for their attention and hard work during this budget season. All of us on this council are dedicated to public service and doing our best for our constituents. We don't always agree on issues, and sometimes debate can get quite heated. But we always walk away with mutual respect and with an understanding that there are different points of view. I'm especially proud that we have worked very collaboratively during this past month of budget hearings, and I hope that spirit of bipartisanship can continue moving forward. I also want to thank the county executive, the chief administrative officer, Ms. Stacy Rogers, budget director Ed Blades, and the senior staff and the department heads for their hard work in preparing the budget. I want to thank the county auditor and her dedicated staff for their tireless work in preparing the council's budget analysis packages, and our legislative central staff for their great work throughout the year, especially our administrator Chris Vel Castro. We have conducted all of our meetings and communications virtually for over a year. And although we've gotten used to our computer screens and become pretty good at video teleconferencing, Chris has been a great conductor and made sure all of our readings that we are all reading from the same sheet of music. I want to thank all county employees. This time last year, no one knew how long this pandemic would last. And as Dr. Branch has said, we're still not out of the woods yet. But in spite of all the challenges, they have continued to do their jobs either in person or teleworking, while taking care of their families during a time when schools and daycares and many other institutions have closed or altered their schedules. To show our appreciation, I'm proud to announce that we have fully funded the proposed two percent cost of living increase to county employees effective June thirtieth, as well as a two percent cost of living adjustment effective January one of next year. Also want to thank the residents of this great county. Over the past year, we have seen the best of the people of Baltimore County. COVID-19 has taken us like nothing we've ever seen before. It has changed the basis of much of what we do. People have followed the rules and also tried to help one another, and we are trying to get back to what we remember as normal. It hasn't been easy, and it continues to challenge us. But I know when I'm at church or the grocery store or out in the community that we are getting closer to better times. Please be patient, especially with one another. And please, if you haven't yet, go get the vaccine. You will not only be helping yourself and your family and friends, but you will also be helping us all. Finally, as we approach the Memorial Weekend holiday and also think about the year that has passed and the lives lost from COVID-19, please take a moment to remember our soldiers, the men and women in uniform who sacrificed their lives for our country and our freedom. Thank you very much for listening, and may God bless you all. Thank you. We will now call the bills for final reading and vote. Mr. Secretary, will you now read the first bill? And I guess what I'll do is for those that may want to leave now, who just came for the budget message, we're going to go into our regular meeting. So if you want to leave, this is the time you can. And we thank you all for joining us today. Mr. Secretary, please call all bills for final reading and vote.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is Bill thirty-eight twenty-one. This is the annual budget and appropriation ordinance for Baltimore County.
Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on Bill thirty-three dash twenty.
That was a typo. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. It's thirty-eight dash twenty-one. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Bill thirty-eight dash twenty-one has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one. This is the personnel law of Baltimore County. And we do have a witness for this bill.
Okay, Ms. Renee Coleman? I'm going to come up and testify on this bill. Yes, please.
Yes, so Bill thirty-nine twenty-one seeks to implement the changes to the Classification and Compensation Plan as recommended by the Personnel and Salary Advisory Board or resulting from labor negotiations for FY twenty-two. As introduced, Section One will correct an administrative error that amends grade seven C longevity year twenty-five from ninety-five thousand one seventy-five to ninety-five thousand three oh seven. As introduced, Section Two of Bill thirty-nine twenty-one amends several job classifications, codes, and salary grades in Section Two Classification and Compensation Plan. As introduced, Section Three of Bill thirty-nine twenty-one adds several new job classifications to Section Two Classification and Compensation Plan along with their corresponding code and salary grades. As introduced, Section Four of Bill thirty-nine twenty-one renames a naturalist to a naturalist two in Section Two Classification and Compensation Plan. The administration has advised that it is requesting several amendments to this Bill thirty-nine twenty-one to implement a two percent mid-year cost of living adjustment COLAR or equivalent pay scale changes negotiated by the bargaining groups. The Office of Budget and Finance advised that the cost of all changes reflected in Bill thirty-nine twenty-one as amended, including any me-too effects on the various bargaining groups, totals approximately seven point five million for fiscal year twenty-two and that such costs are fully included in the proposed FY twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Secretary, please read the amendments to Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, there is an amendment to the bill. Mr. Phillips in our office worked very hard with the administration to put these amendments together, and he is going to speak to them.
Okay, Mr. Phillips?
So the amendments to this bill, they do several things. One is they add about thirteen different pay schedules that were missing from the original bill. I was advised by the administration that, among others, COVID-19 delayed the drafting of these pay schedules, so that's why they're an amendment. The amendments also add a change the classification for G.I.S. Senior Analyst. And that's pretty much the sum substance of these amendments.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the amendments to Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on the amendments to Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
The eyes have it, the amendment to Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one has passed. Are there any questions or comments from the members before we vote on the bill? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one as amended?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one as amended.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
The eyes have it, Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-one as amended has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next, Mr. Secretary, is Bill forty dash twenty-one. This is the annual property tax ordinance for the county.
Okay. Do we have someone to read this into the record?
There's no witness necessary for this one. Uh, I, there, there's no witness necessary for this one. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, if there are no questions from the members, you can move right to the vote.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Mr. Secretary, uh, please call the roll on Bill 34 dash 40 dash 21.
Another typo. Sorry about that, sir.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Beavons?
Aye.
Mr. Patoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Ayes have it, Bill 40 dash 21 has passed. Next bill, Mr. Secretary.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Bill 41 dash 21. This is a bill, uh, for the current expense budget, COVID-19 FEMA projects, emergency measure.
Okay, Mr. Kevin Reed?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, council members, and it looks like Ms. Coleman was the first one to beat me for live in-person testimony. I thought that was my goal for the year, but I'm number two, so I'm happy to be here. It's good to see everybody in person.
Two is good.
Yeah, two is good. Um, Bill 4121 is a request from the administration for supplemental appropriation of up to $20 million for FEMA projects that will be submitted for eligible expenses in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have three major activities going on as far as leveraging external funding, and that's wrapping up the closing out the CARES funding, um, the ability to submit eligible expenses to FEMA as well as, uh, beginning our ARP, which I think we'll discuss next. So a normal FEMA event for a natural disaster would be, you know, maybe a million dollars, three million dollars. It would be short lasting in which the, uh, projects would be submitted for reimbursement that may or may not cross fiscal years. What we have here, unfortunately, with COVID-19 is a large scale, large dollar event that has been long lasting, which is not typical. So this, this really, this appropriation is a placeholder. It's really an accounting maneuver so that these expenditures do not sit in a general fund budget or a grant budget while we await reimbursement. The benefits of setting this up as a grant program is that we avoid artificially inflating baseline expenditures that would have to be identified and backed out, um, in relation to spending affordability or other historical purposes. Reimbursements will be applied directly back to this grant, and, um, currently our FEMA reimbursement is at 100%. And, um, we've identified $12 million in potentially eligible expenditures that we're working with our local representative to submit, um, as we speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed.
You're welcome. Does that mean my time's up and I can?
It's like, uh, it's like the Oscars when the music starts to play, it's time to stop.
That's right. Put that timer off for the next one.
That's right, that's right.
We're about to boot you off the stage.
Okay.
Are there any questions on Bill 41 dash 21? Mr. Secretary, uh, you have some amendments to 41 dash 21?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. They're, they're really very technical amendments requested by the administration. Uh, the first would just clarify that these federal funds that are made available are anticipated to be, uh, federal funds, um, and second, the amendment would, uh, strike, uh, a reference to subsection B of Section 12, 712 of the Charter, um, just to clarify things.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the amendments to Bill 41 dash 21?
I'm moving.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll to the amendments to Bill 41 dash 21.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Beavons?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Patoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the amendments pass. Are there any questions or comments from the members before we vote? Is there a motion to approve Bill 41 dash 21 as amended?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 41 dash 21 as amended.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mrs. Beavons?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Patoka?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
The ayes have it, Bill 41 dash 21 as amended has passed. Mr. Secretary, uh, next item, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Bill 42 dash 21. This is also a current expense budget bill, American Rescue Plan Emergency Measure.
Okay, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The administration is requesting approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $161 million for Baltimore County's allocation of the American Rescue Plan. The final allocation that, uh, Baltimore County is set to receive is $160,706,923. The requested appropriation of $161 million includes an interest allocation that the interim guidance does allow us to account for. And as requested, it's my understanding that the council's been provided a, um, a briefing document of our draft blueprint outlining the planned use of our ARP funding. And I'm happy to run through that, and we structured this similar to how we have set up our CARES funding with major impact areas, um, where we'll have buckets of activities, um, to, to make charges against that seem to work very well for our reporting purposes. So in, in summary, impact area one is really our miscellaneous increased expenditures, and these are for items that are directly related to the county's COVID-19 response and are separate from the FY 22 operating budget that you just approved. These are items like PPE, increased janitorial expenses, and additional items such as, uh, things needed for OIT and cleaning. It also includes personnel costs, including a premium pay cost estimate and the potential for additional positions or labor chargebacks for employees whose activities are directly related to COVID-19 specific activities. So when we talk about chargebacks, as far as they are concerned, as of March 31st, we had $12.1 million in labor-related chargebacks from the general fund to the CARES grant. And this, again, assists us with retaining an adequate fund balance as we move into FY 22. The $15.8 million estimate that you see assumes that effort reporting will drop off in the future and is also dedicated to additional temporary personnel in areas to support our efforts in relation to food access coordination and small business resource consultants. The $78 million estimate in total, again, is over the two and a half year grant duration. And by comparison, as of April 30th, in 13 and a half months, we spent $87.6 million in these categories in the CARES Act funding. So this is a significant reduction in these planned expenditures in this category as we hope our overall emergency response decreases over this time period and changes into more recovery. Uh, but again, that's something that we monitor closely and, and we will have the flexibility to adjust as needed. Impact area two is addressing the negative economic impacts. And in CARES, we provided over $10.8 million in a little over a year that supported other external funding that provided 1,489 grants across a wide range of businesses, including restaurants, hotels, personnel services, and retail. In this $25 million estimate, we have the opportunity here to add in a more broader economic recovery approach that includes other impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality, as well as we have the ability to potentially do something for the not-for-profit sector. This could be in the form of grants to these areas or as well as assistance to individuals and their families that have been negatively impacted. The subcabinet on Economic Recovery led by Director Howie of the Department of Economic and Workforce Development has already held three public roundtables to solicit ideas from members of the community in these various sectors and will submit recommendations, uh, in the near future. Moving to impact area three, we, we can't forget public health, and we've added on a component of behavioral health. This $5 million placeholder in this function aims to support another $28 million in grant funding that the Department of Health has included in its FY 22 budget that is reserved for COVID-19-related activities specifically for supporting vaccination efforts. Over the course of the last year, the county spent $14.5 million in the CARES bucket that was dedicated to testing, contact tracing, and vaccination, as well as labor chargebacks dedicated to, um, other public health responses. We know that the pandemic has, uh, exposed and exacerbated inequities and health disparities as well as behavioral health issues with our residents. And 3.4 million of this placeholder will be used to fund the previously announced expansion of our mobile crisis team and the balancing of funding to support chronic disease prevention in relation to COVID-19 with an emphasis on our disproportionately and unrepresented communities. As we've learned over the past year, the public health response, it's a fluid situation. While we are currently shifting from a large-scale, location-specific vaccination efforts to a more targeted approach, if things change significantly this fall and the need for testing ramps up again, or we begin vaccinating children under the age of 12 or potentially providing booster shots to the general public, we will need to be prepared to adjust this bucket as necessary. Impact area four, revenue loss and stabilization. This is kind of the, the, the good news, bad news. I guess it's good news in that, you know, although CARES Act funding specifically prohibited revenue replacement, under ARP, we do have the opportunity to provide government services to the extent of revenue reduction and revenue experience due to COVID-19. Um, but, you know, as, as we've discussed, the, the county did pretty very well and, and, um, we've weathered the economic storm thus far, so there's certain methodologies that we have to work through. Um, we have to look at revenue as a whole. We can't cherry pick individual revenues. Um, for example, investment income or hotel and motel tax, just because those areas were down, we can't book that delta, um, for this. So this is something that we're still using, uh, we're still working through, and, um, hope to have some information on that soon. And finally, impact area five, capital improvements. The ARP Act plainly allows for capital investments and specifically allows for broadband, sewer, and wastewater infrastructure investments as well. And the current proposal provides $45 million as a placeholder to meet these types of capital needs, which could include a subset of transportation, solid waste improvements and stabilization from recommendations resulting from our solid waste work group, streetscapes, and/or other community improvements. And the length of this grant allows for a real thoughtful, deliberate approach to making the best possible investments for our communities and residents in this area. In closing, at this point in time, we are fully obligated in CARES funding. However, our response to the crisis does continue and it, and it's ongoing, although it's, it's changing. Um, we do still have a number of pandemic responses taking place. The performance period of the ARP funding begins on March 3rd, meaning we can go back to incur costs as we close out CARES, although I don't think we have to go back to that point. You know, we are all in this together, and we would welcome the council's thoughts and ideas as we work through this blueprint, and we will keep the council updated, of course, as we move through this recovery phase. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions from the members? Go right here, Councilman Patoka.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Reed. And I've shared this, uh, with the administration on the, uh, the ARP and then related to volunteer fire companies. Uh, in the five categories you itemized, miscellaneous, related to COVID-19 as one, economic recovery as two, public health or behavioral health as three, four, revenue loss and stabilization, and then fifth, capital improvements, which includes broadband, uh, which I want to talk about as well. But in these categories, if there is some way to fit, and I think in a previous meeting I described it as a stipend to their volunteer fire companies, and it's not really a stipend because it's not going to the individual members, but rather, um, uh, some assistance to the volunteer fire stations or companies because they were frontliners over the past year and a half. They were very much in play. They're in many respects hubs of the community. Uh, so if there's a way to engage them with some assistance through the ARP, I think it'd be much appreciated and highly appropriate.
Yes, Ms. Rogers.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Is it still morning? Good morning. Um, Councilmember Patoka, we are absolutely engaged, engaged with the Volunteer Fire Association about what we can do. We are looking very closely at ways that we can identify funding. The county executive is fully supportive of our doing so. We just have to find the right vehicle, uh, to do it because as we've reviewed, uh, the guidances, there are certain nuances in certain parts of the money, uh, that we had to see. Did that apply, uh, to the, the, any nonprofit, but particularly volunteer, uh, fire, uh, companies? But we are absolutely committed to doing that and are looking for the best vehicle. We consulted with OOL, and we've also consulted, uh, back with, uh, the federal level. Mr. Reed is specifically trying to ensure that we do this appropriately so we don't have any, uh, chargebacks or disallowances on the backend.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, and it looks like, um, these are going to be budgeted in bulk accounts to be allocated late at some point in the future for specific line items.
Absolutely, and we asked, um, Chief Ron actually engaged with the Volunteer Fire Fighter Association on four recommendations, and now we're trying to look at, uh, as we look at those recommendations, how we apply the guidances.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Reed. And the only other comment I wanted to make related to broadband. Mr. Chair, thank you for, um, your leadership over the past six months in, in Zoom meetings. But the one area we could improve upon is in broadband to our colleague from the 3rd District who struggled during that time. If we could get broadband directly to Councilman Catch's house, that would be very helpful if we, uh, if we need to, uh, go virtual again. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I, uh, I echo your comments, Councilman Patoka. I know that I have reached out to the administration as well as the executive and, uh, the chief about making sure that we certainly show our appreciation for the, for the work of the volunteer firefighters, and I'm confident it'll be done, just as I appreciate your comments, uh, Mr. Reed, and we certainly appreciate the administration coming forth with some, uh, additional details on the $161 million appropriation, as well as all the conversations we've had about ensuring that, uh, we will be in this together every step of the way before as well as after appropriations are made in terms of decisions. So I appreciate that very much, and it certainly has satisfied, uh, me and my colleagues, so we don't have, uh, any additional amendments that I know we talked about before, but we're not even going to go there.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I need to make a comment about internet for, uh, my constituents in northern Baltimore County. Uh, when, uh, the beginning of this term, uh, I, uh, worked with the county executive on the problem of the fact that there are 25,000 homes in northern Baltimore County that don't have internet access. Despite what my colleague from the 2nd District has to say, I actually have it because I live closer to, I live within the Hurdle, and, and I pay $280 a month, so, uh, but anyhow, so I can tell you I have it, but, and the reason I keep the Comcast is that we live in a house built in 1850, and there's been all kinds of problems keeping it working correctly, and I hate to admit it, but I think there is something wrong again. I'm going to have to call him, and Forrest will come out and he will straighten it out, I hope. So, uh, but I appreciate the administration. They said early on they were going to work for, to expand, uh, internet availability to, to all of Baltimore County, uh, of course, especially northern Baltimore County. And, uh, they've, they hired an individual from Comcast who's done an excellent job trying to, uh, facilitate connecting homes. Uh, they've, uh, the administration has, uh, worked with the state securing millions of dollars for additional internet connections, and I want to thank them for that. And, uh, you know, I, I really appreciate it when administration makes commitments and they follow through. And, uh, I appreciate so much, and so do my constituents. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Councilman Crandall.
Sure. Kevin, thank you for you and your, your staff and, and the administration's work on this. Um, yeah, I think that we did have a concern, uh, that was expressed in the work session that this is kind of a $161 million check, uh, without knowing exactly what it's going to, and that, of course, can make the council nervous, but, um, I've been assured by Mr. Connor in the administration that there's going to be plenty of communication, I think there already is, between the agencies and, and, uh, the executive branch and legislative branch. So I do have a comfort level on this. Uh, I think it's an opportunity. I think it's an opportunity to, to really take better care of our citizens, and the money's coming. And I would just urge, as these things roll out and the ideas roll out, just the request that you, you, you keep us notified as quickly as you can. And of course, you've already solicited some of our input on some of our ideas. So that's a good thing. And I'm sorry that you were second. And even though I hate the things, we'll give you a participation trophy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have, you have to say you're the first man.
Mr. Chairman, you also stole my joke as well, because I was going to do, am I on mute? You know, that's, but you already had that in your speech, so. Is my camera on?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bevins, and then you, Ms. Rogers.
You'll always be my number one.
It's good to know, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Noted.
It, it is a transition back, though, because you can't wait to the very last minute to get to the next meeting. But you try to put it on and say, oh, my God, this is an in-person, so you run down the hall. But Councilmember Crandall, we want to assure you that the dialogue, the, the open dialogue that we had, we want to continue that, just as we did with the CARES Act funding, and ensure that the, the funding, we, we figured out the, the buckets based on what the, the needs are. But as we go further in fine tuning activities and actions, absolutely, we will be in communication with the council. That's our commitment.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Secretary, you want to, we have an amendment?
We do, Mr. Chairman. It is another similar technical minor amendment. In this, in fact, in this case, all the amendment does is strike the reference in this bill to subsection B of section seven twelve of the charter. And it also, there is also another reference. Nope, actually, that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amendments to bill forty-two dash twenty-one?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on the amendment to bill forty-two dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Petoka?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the amendment passes. Are there any questions or comments from the members before we call the vote? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve bill forty-two dash twenty-one as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on bill forty-two dash twenty-one as amended.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Petoka?
Aye.
The ayes have it, bill forty-two dash twenty-one as amended has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is bill forty-three dash twenty-one. This is the Neglected Property Community Fund.
Okay, Mr. Gutwold?
That's a hard act to follow. I'm, I'm the third male or third person with a mask on today. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Bill forty-three dash twenty-one establishes a new non-lapsing special fund to provide local financial assistance to bring neglected properties into compliance with the county code. If you recall, the Code Enforcement Task Force recommended creating, establishing a special revolving fund generated from fines and liens collected through code enforcement. This bill establishes this fund to stabilize, repair and demolish derelict properties and structures, provides residential and business owners with financial assistance to bring properties into compliance with the code, implement existing and enhanced code enforcement compliance techniques to deal with trash, weed, control, rad eradication and, and debris. The fiscal twenty-two budget includes two million for the fund. Historically, these funds are from general funds, and in my, in the PAI budget ranging from about seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars a year. The sources of this revenue include about one point five million generated from code-related fines and liens. Any questions?
Any questions from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to recognize Mr. Gutwold as the first planner to testify in an in-person meeting. Thank you, Mr. Gutwold, for representing our profession.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. Unrelated to this issue, I want to thank you, Mr. Gutwold. I've noticed a real, a real improvement since you took over this department. I have constituents in Perry Hall who had a runaway car go into their, their living room in February, and they were staying in a hotel while they sorted out insurance and other issues. And your department acted, acted with lightning speed to get their permits approved. It's that type of customer service that really is important in the county, and I want to thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall.
Hi, Mr. Gutwold. Yes, unrelated to, to this bill as well, just a quick question for you. Are the, the permitting offices across the street, are they now open and open to the public? For people to walk in their permits and, and things?
We're doing a soft reopening, so we're doing it in stages. I'm doing it for the one-day permits at this point, when specifically electron, electrical permits, because that is the most volume that I'm dealing with. So once we get that iron, you know, that process down, we'll start opening up the more and more in-person.
Okay. And I, I probably should have checked this before I asked the question. But is it published on the county website, the hours that the building is open, or?
We have started that. I don't know if it's on the public, on the website. I have to check that. But we are letting everybody know. We have sent out specific emails to, like, the electrical contractors, so they're all aware of what to do in person.
All right. So the, the, the other, like, say plumbing, building inspection, gathering permits, all that stuff?
Is still drop off or, you know, mailed in. But I'm putting a game plan together to slowly allow to, to do that. Working out the, the arrangements that we have out in the lobby for in-person and keeping the, the crowds down, if you will. So it's by appointment only, so.
Okay. Or do you, do you feel that, I know that the, the office, and through no fault of your, your own, but that we, in certain areas of permitting, we fell behind? Are we where we should be yet? Or we're just climbing, we're still climbing the mountain?
We're still climbing, but we're, we're doing much better than we have been. We're, we're, we weren't, we're not weeks behind. We are only days behind.
Okay. Well, good. I know it hasn't been easy, so appreciate your effort. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Rogers.
Councilmember Crandall, we also want to let you know that we monitor the backlog on, on a regular basis. For a period there, the, the county executive himself sat in with the meetings, monitoring the, the backlog. The other thing I'll say about the promotion as we move forward, particularly into the fall, as we introduce more capability. We have a, a online page now where you can make appointments for different county services that give spacing in terms of the numbers of people who are in the building. So we're trying to promote that. During the pandemic, we did some benchmarking with other jurisdictions and found this process application down in the state of Florida that we have implemented. So we can send some additional information to you and your staff so that you can talk to constituents about being able to make appointments for in-person services.
That, that would be very helpful if you all could send that along, absolutely. And I, I do have to tell Mr. Gutwold that when we have had issues with permits that have been hanging out for, for way too long, your office has been very responsive. You personally have been very, very responsive to us, so we appreciate that, too.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Gutwold. I also appreciate the responses that you've been giving back to us on people that have been inquiring. So I received a letter just today about someone that's purchased waterfront property, and they want to build, I believe, two garages on the property. And since March, they applied for the permit, and it's two separate permits. Do you think from March to now is an okay amount of time for it to be sitting? Is my first question. And the second is, they haven't been able to speak with anybody. So is there any way, when they call, they either get directed to someone that they really don't need to speak to, or it's always, we'll have somebody call you back? So I'm going to send, I'm going to get ready to send that over to you, sir. But I'm wondering, what is, what, what's the best action for constituents to take who are saying, look, I feel like it's been a little bit longer than usual. What, what should I be doing? That's a tough one. I am working on the, the, the phone issue and getting responses back. I have redirected some staff. That's all they do. The volumes have been substantially higher than when I look at past years, probably because of the drop-offs, right? Nobody, nobody's speaking to somebody one-on-one. That's to Mr. Councilman Crandall's point. We need to start opening up more because it's the back and forth, and staff are getting inundated with, with not having the right materials and going back, and it's, it's a communication issue. Whereas if they were in person, they would say, look, this is what you're missing. These are the things, oh, this is what you want to do. You know, they could look at a diagram and talk it through, right? That's not happening. I am looking at that to bring that back. So that's causing some of the issues and delays. When you get one phone call, that could take forty minutes, because it's just talking the person through the process, which backs up the other phone calls, right? And I, and I actually think this is a little complicated, because it's questioning about the height of garages compared to, they already have to build a house up about ten and a half feet. Because it's in the flood zone. So they just have questions they need answered, and they feel like they haven't been able to move forward at all. So I just got it today, so I'm going to send it over, and hopefully we can get somebody at least in a conversation with, with them. I assure them that we, we try to work with them as quickly as we can, but we've had issues since COVID, because as soon as we get their houses built, then they go on the tax roll, and, you know, we're happy about that. So, you know, we, I guarantee them that we're trying to do the best that we can with what we've been dealt with this year, for sure. And you've been very good at, at hunting, hunting things down and calling people back, and I really appreciate that. So I'm going to send you one more. Okay, no problem.
Any other questions or comments? I will just echo what others have said. Mr. Gutwold, you certainly have been very responsive to me at a number of issues, and you jumped right on it. You got it taken care of, which, which is great for the citizens and good for me. So thank you so much. There's no other questions? Mr. Secretary, please call the, let me see if there, what do we got? It's calling the role here now, right?
Yes, sir.
Let's call the role on bill forty-three dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Petoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Ayes have it, bill forty-three dash twenty-one has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is bill forty-four dash twenty-one. This is a bill sponsored by Councilman Catch, zoning regulations, multifamily residential uses in the ML zone.
Councilman Catch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This legislation is a redheaded esquimaux. In other words, it applies to just one plot of land in Baltimore County, and that's in Hunt Valley, in what I call the Hunt Valley Industrial Park. It's a extended stay motel, where if you take a look at it, the, it has not been maintained properly over the years. And in fact, to take this a little further down the road, it, if you want to rent a room, I understand you can rent it for an hour or two, although I have no experience with that. I've never tried it myself. But the pleas assure me that that's what you can do there. So anyhow, the, the building was sold to a new owner who wants to convert it to apartments or condos, whatever. So with this, they've already started, actually. And it's very interesting to hear what they find when they are clearing some of these units out that were just left. So anyhow, the, what this bill will do, allow them to convert these units to condominiums, apartments, whatever. And so I, I think, and, and we've gone to all the neighboring communities, and they support this action. And so I ask the council to please approve this bill, and it would be done a great favor to the Hunt Valley area.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve, no, is there an amendment?
There, there is one minor amendment, Mr. Chairman. There are some qualifiers in the bill. And the amendment would specify that there can, in no event, the conversion of the units from apart, from extended stay suites to apartments can in no event exceed a total of ninety-six units. That is what, that is the number of suites that are there presently, and this amendment just specifies that. And the other amendment would state that, would, would strike the seven hundred fifty-foot in proximity to the light rail station and substitute one thousand feet.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the amendment to bill forty-four dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on the amendment to bill forty-four dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Petoka?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Ayes have it, the amendment passed. Are there any questions or comments from the members who would call the vote? Is there a motion to approve bill forty-four dash twenty-one as amended?
So moved.
I'll second it. It's been moved in second. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on bill forty-four dash twenty-one as amended.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Petoka?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Ayes have it, bill forty-four dash twenty-one as amended has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next is bill forty-five twenty-one. This is a, this is a bill sponsored by council members Marks and Bevins, zoning regulations, temporary use trailers.
Okay. Mr. Marks?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You may remember that earlier in this term, the council approved legislation sponsored by my colleague, Councilwoman Bevins, that allowed for manned donation sites in the White Marsh area. This legislation expands that, that region to include major shopping centers throughout the county. I think this is a good practice as we all look to reduce dumping throughout the county. These are manned donation centers as opposed to the bins that are sometimes centers for accumulating waste. And I think this is, like I said, a good policy. It's good for residents. It's good for our neighborhoods. It's good for the environment, and I strongly endorse your support.
Councilwoman Bev?
Yes, I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Marks, for having the foresight to wanting to expand this. It really took almost a year to originally get it done because of COVID. But it was great partnership between the donation site in White Marsh Mall, and I think it will be really great to expand it around the county. We have dumping problems within the county. We all know that. And we also have issues with some of the donation bins, with people dumping around them items that aren't supposed to be there, just clothing and shoes are supposed to go now, not furniture and things like that. So I like that it's manned. There's somebody there. And I also like that there'll be a presence there, so when you go to the mall, you'll see that and say, hey, I didn't know that was there. I'm hoping that they'll eventually move it from different sites around the mall, because some people always come in one side or the other. And I think it's a great way of recycling everything that's taken in by this organization. Goes to the Purple Heart, I think the School for the Blind. It's several well-known, well-organized nonprofits. So I think it's a good thing. So I look forward to it. I think it's going to be a good program. Thank you, Councilman Marks.
Sure. Mr. Secretary, I think you can, you can add me as a co-sponsor, or are we going to add you to, Councilman?
Sure, why not? I'll hold on.
All right.
Do you have a comment?
I do have, I do have a comment and a couple of questions. I think the biggest cheer that the county executive received when he delivered the budget, his budget message, was when he announced that the county's going to reinstitute bulk trash pickup, which I think is going to, going to be a big help. And I'm anxiously waiting the, the details, Ms. Rogers, on, on. on, on how that program will work. I talked a little bit with the county executive about it, but I know the finishing touches are still pending. So I think along with that, along with the ability to have this organization set up countywide operations, we can put a dent in the, in the illegal dumping problem. So first, Councilwoman Bevins, you're more familiar with this organization than most of us, I guess. What type of items do they accept?
And I'm sorry, we didn't mention it. It was green drop, did you mention it?
Green drop.
Yeah, it's green drop. There's four or five of them, but I think there's a veterans organization, Federation, Federation of the Blind, Purple Heart is one of them as well.
So they're accepting household?
They take small appliances, and they took, take new and used, slightly-used clothes, shoes, not something you would throw out, something that someone could actually use again. They could be, it could be donated to them, or they could buy it at a lower cost. So, you know, I don't know about larger pieces of furniture and things like that. I'm sure that they'll have a list of things that they accept, and if they can't accept them, I'm hoping that they'll be able to tell us who may be able to accept those items.
And my second question would be, the, okay, so these are manned, but they're not manned twenty-four hours. Have they experienced anything at White Marsh where people just drop it off at the trailer?
They're not up and running yet.
Oh, okay.
They're not up and running yet.
So I'd be interested to know how, if, if, if people know that they can just leave their stuff there, and they come in the middle of the night and just put, put it there. I don't know how they stave that off, but...
The management at White Marsh Mall feels like it's gonna be a really positive thing to have a presence on the lot to actually keep people away from the mall after hours.
Okay. And what assurance do we have that it will always be a manned operation?
Well, we, we've had that assurance, so if it doesn't, we, you know, I guess that, that will definitely be an issue that the mall will take up with them. I doubt it would ever get to us because the mall wouldn't tolerate it because they don't want any kind of junk loading up on their, their property. So they're gonna have to be responsible, and the good thing for them is they have a lot of large dumpsters. And they always have on-site maintenance folks that could take care of it. So we'll have to wait and see, you know, how it pans out at the first mall.
Well, I'd like to put a certain clothing donation bin company, and I'm gonna call them a company, like to put them out of business with this.
I just call them the yellow bins.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Ch, Mr. Crandall, is that the bill, the legislation, the original legislation, as well as this one, does specify that they have to be manned during certain normal business hours, I believe.
Okay, so that's our assurance. It's, it's, it's gonna be a law?
Yes.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on Bill forty-five dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
As have it, Bill forty-five dash twenty-one has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Bill forty-six dash twenty-one. This bill is sponsored by Councilman Marx, zoning regulations, uses permitted, residential development proposals adjacent to the Honey Go Overlake District.
Councilman Marx?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. It's a very wise saying that many of us in local politics and community activism would be smart to follow. In two thousand, twenty-one years ago, my predecessors supported the rezoning of a corner of Honey Go Boulevard and Bel Air Road for commercial development. In two thousand eight, thirteen years ago, Baltimore County approved a shopping center at this location. When the developer came to me to seek approval to convert four acres of the shopping center to residential development, I thought it was a concept worth exploring. We put together a task force of community leaders chaired by the president of the Perry Hall Improvement Association, a former Baltimore County Planning Director, that worked for six months to come up with the consensus. These were tough negotiations, and I refused to act until the developer agreed to the number-one choice of the committee, age-restricted, low-level senior villas that will not overcrowd our schools or be an unsightly, imposing sight at the entrance to Perry Hall. We were able to get other concessions as well, including the protection of a majestic fifty-foot-tall stand of trees that might otherwise be destroyed at an adjacent property. The legislation before you, while imperfect, represents the culmination of six months of hard work, deliberation, and consensus-building by local Perry Hall residents and the owner of this property. It was a more exhaustive collaborative process than any other conventional development procedure or the process required under a planned unit development. But still, some have found reason to complain. They complain about process when, in fact, again, the dialogue and deliberation far exceeds any that would occur with a conventional development or a planned unit development. I am extraordinarily disappointed, and that is a very generous word, by the opposition of some who do not live in Perry Hall, who seem unconcerned with the opinions of those most affected by this development. At the work session, you did not hear one word of opposition from any resident of Perry Hall. I have not received one email or phone call of opposition from a single resident of Perry Hall. In fact, every piece of testimony you heard from the people who actually live in Perry Hall was supportive of this legislation. One group, a countywide land preservation organization that I have supported time and time again over the past decade, has spent the past two weeks putting out a steady stream of attacks against me and this legislation. Another group based in Towson wants design standards for its part of Baltimore County, but not the same treatment for a small part of Perry Hall. So let's assume we follow their lead and not that of the district's council representative and the people most affected. Reject this legislation, make a stand for process, make a stand for the perfect. And guess what happens to Perry Hall? Four more acres of paved surface. The destruction of these trees at Honey Go Boulevard and Bel Air Road, real environmentalism. My first priority is to the communities I represent. Every one of us on this council would do the same. I want to thank all of the community representatives who worked with me on this agreement that is the foundation of this legislation. Please pass this legislation that is the result of consensus-building and local collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marx. Councilwoman Bevins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Marx, I always give credit when credit is due, and I have to tell you, you worked extremely hard on this. From the very beginning, on the virtual meetings, you know, we heard how upset the community was that there was gonna be five stories there, didn't match with the community, they didn't want it to be their gateway to Perry Hall. There were so many complaints about it. You brought the communities, all the communities, back together again with the developer, and, you know, I couldn't even believe it. The last meeting that we had, everyone was in agreement. Everyone thanked you, every single person thanked you for your hard work, every single person said, this is, this is great. We'll do age fifty-five restrictions, it won't impact our schools, it's just gonna be a great addition to Perry Hall. And to keep those majestic trees was just phenomenal, and to not have any more asphalt over there, I don't know how anybody can complain about this project. You really should be commended, and I do really mean that because I know the genesis of this project, and now where it ended up, that is truly about compromise with the community and with the developer, and we all know, sitting up here, that's not always an easy job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Crandall?
Sure, I just, I think Councilwoman Bevins said it very well. David, I know that you've worked a long time and very, very hard on this, and that, I think the, the criticism that you've received, I think, is, is unwarranted. I, you know, sometimes on this council, when an opportunity arises in your, in your district, and there are problems with it, we have to go to work, and you did it, and you have to talk to the people in the neighborhoods, you have to talk to the associations. You did that, you facilitated the conversations. So I'm, I'm happy to support this bill. It's, this is an opportunity that you are capitalizing on in your district, and I'm happy to support you on it.
Thank you.
I would guess I agree with Councilman Crandall and Bevins. Councilman Marx, we know that this has been a long process because, as Councilwoman Bevins said, we were sort of here with you going through parts of it. So we know, and it's good to see that this project moved forward, especially with the blessings of the community. One gentleman in your community, I, I guess, I, I thought, sure, he would be against it, but even he admitted that he was surprised to be for the project. So it's good that that's being resolved, and this can move forward, and as you say, those trees can stay and less pave, or four acres of less paving. So, any additional questions or comments?
Okay, is there a motion to approve Bill forty-six dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Wait a minute, wait, do we have an amendment here?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Amendment first.
Oh, that's right.
The amendment is, would actually, I think there are some more qualifiers to benefit the community that I think Mr. Marx worked with. The first one would indicate that the residential development area shall occupy a maximum of four gross acres of the develop, of the overall development tract. And then in the application section of the regulate, of the relevant regulation, it, the amendment would state that for units directly fronting on an existing public road, the maximum height shall be two stories above the highest point of grade. And then later on, or actually, yeah, and then later on, in the application section, the amendment would state that, among other things, that the development would satisfy the requirements of Section thirty-two, six, one oh eight of the county code by paying a fee in lieu consistent with the fee imposed for an elderly housing facility.
Any questions on the amendment? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary. Now, is there a motion to approve the amendments to Bill forty-six dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on the amendment to Bill forty-six dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
As have it, amendment to forty-six dash twenty-one has passed.
I would like to say, Mr. out of court with the, oh, I called you. Oh my God, I can't believe I did that. Mr. Boswick, I have to say, I don't appreciate the language of fifty-five and older being associated with elderly.
I don't either, Mr. Madam.
Put that for the record.
It didn't used to matter to me either, but it does now.
Okay, the eyes have it, the amendment to forty-six twenty-one has passed. I appreciate you pointing it out, Councilwoman Bevins, about that age thing. Mr. Secretary, now, is there a mem, is there a motion to approve Bill forty-six dash twenty-one as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on them. Bill forty-six dash twenty-one as amended.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
As have it, Bill forty-six dash twenty-one as amended has passed. Mr. Secretary, next bill, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Bill forty-seven dash twenty-one. This bill is sponsored by councilmembers Marx and Jones. Development Review and Approval Process.
Councilman Marx?
Thank you very much. This, the legislation provides for the digitization of development plans, so that when a developer proposes a project, instead of having to mail out bulky paperwork, the developer can provide a, a link that a community organization, a resident can use to access it.
A Dropbox or some other internet site. The person could still request bulky documents if they want, but it seems like this is a, a good government type of bill that will not only cut down on the waste of paper, but improve accessibility to the development process.
Thank you, Councilman Marx. I, I agree, and one of the things that did it for me was when I was shown a picture of all the development plans that was returned because of a bad address, and it was stacks of paper. So I know we may not save those big majestic trees, but certainly we'll save part of them in the long run. So I, I certainly support it. We've, we've come a long way, and this is another example of where we had to change the way we did business during COVID. But some of those changes are beneficial and make sense. So we'll take those changes into the future as we move forward. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to be added as a co-sponsor to this bill.
Okay. No more questions? Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on Bill forty-seven dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
As have it, Bill forty-seven dash twenty-one has passed. The council will now consider all fiscal matters. Extensive testimony was taken at the council's work session on May eighteenth. The witnesses too testified that the work session are available to restate their testimony if needed. If a council member have any questions regarding a particular fiscal matter, that item will be discussed as a separate matter. I will now call upon the secretary to read the cover letter for fiscal matters one through six.
Mr. Chairman, fiscal matter one is a budget appropriation transfer related to home-delivered meals program, Department of Aging. Fiscal matter two is a purchase order with Margrave Strategies LLC for the anchor institution strategy study. Fiscal matter three is a contract with Spigler Petroleum Equipment LLC. Fiscal ma, fiscal matter four is a contract with Broadway Services Incorporated. Fiscal matter five is a contract with Sky Clean Incorporated, and fiscal matter six is a contract with Holland's Organic Products Incorporated.
Any questions from the members? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve fiscal matters one through six?
I'll move it.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on fiscal matters one through six.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Marx?
Aye.
As have it, fiscal matters one through six is approved. We'll now consider all miscellaneous business. Mr. Secretary, first item, please.
Mr. Chairman, whenever a contract over twenty-five thousand dollars is awarded by a process other than formal competitive bid, it is required that a copy of the contract be given to the council, and the nature and parties be announced by the secretary at the next legislative session following award. I believe there are sixteen such contracts this morning, almost afternoon. First is with Coastal Trailer Sales and Leasing for refrigerated trailers related to COVID-nineteen, additional award total of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Next is JS Incorporating Doing Business as America's Best Value-In Hotel Accommodations related to COVID. Award total seventy-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars, thirty-nine cents. Next is Hotel Pikeville LLC Doing Business as the Doubletree by Hilton for, again, again, accommodations during COVID, sixty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars, sixty-six cents. Red Run Hospitality LLC Doing Business as Residents in Baltimore Owens Mills. Hotel accommodations, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred ten dollars. Brody Transportation Company Incorporated Refrigerated Truck Rental related to COVID-nineteen, nine thousand. The additional award total of nine thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Brody Transportation Company Incorporated Dry Freight Truck Rental, COVID-nineteen. Additional award of nine thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars. Brody Transportation Incorporated Dry Freight Trailer Rental, COVID-nineteen. Eleven thou, additional award of eleven thousand, two hundred twenty dollars. Worldwide Distributors Incorporated Doing Business as E-Lighting for vinyl gloves, powder-free vinyl gloves, examination gloves, additional, or I'm sorry, just award total of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred ten dollars. Rexel USA Incorporated Tech Support, Tech Support related to the Public Works Supervisory Control Data Acquisition System. Data Acquisition System, award total of seventy thousand, eighty-six dollars. Dave Purchase Project slash N A S E N for medical supplies and harm reduction services, estimated award total of two hundred thousand dollars. Real Digital Media LLC Software and Digital Signage, award total of one hundred eleven thousand dollars. Paqueya Family, Paqueya Valley Farm Dairy, for dairy products, milk, yogurt, and cheese related to COVID nineteen, estimated award total of one point, one million, two hundred twenty thousand dollars. Old Cress Farm LLC Food, Poultry, Chicken, and Turkey Related to COVID nineteen, estimated award of one million, one hundred ten thousand dollars. Albright Farms Corporation for Large Eggs Co., related to COVID nineteen, in the amount of six hundred eleven thousand dollars. South Mountain Creamery LLC for gallons of milk related to COVID nineteen, four hundred eighty-four thousand dollar estimated award. Edward G. Rawl and Sons Incorporated for Boxed Produce Related to COVID nineteen, estimated award total of three million, nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is Resolution sixty-four dash twenty-one. This is a resolution to authorize agreement with Solarstar Hernwood LLC.
Seth Bluman?
Thank you. Resolutions sixty-four twenty-one authorizes the county to enter into a twenty-five year agreement with Solar, Solarstar Hernwood for payments in lieu of taxation on real property, which is the land, and personal property, which is the equipment of the solar developer, to support a solar energy project at the closed Hernwood landfill. It's a capped landfill, so it's an underutilized site, it's just basically a meadow at this point, in Woodstock. The payment in lieu of taxation agreement is effective upon the commercial operation date, which is when the solar project is finished and online, which is estimated at this point to be September twenty-eighth of twenty-three. And the payment in lieu of taxation will remain in effect until the termination of the lease and the agreement, which is the expiration date. The county has entered into a power purchase agreement, which is how we buy the energy with Solarstar, for the energy generated by the system. Solarstar intends to enter into a ground lease with the county for the installation of the facilities on approximately fifty-eight acres for Hernwood, about nineteen acres at Parkton, there are two different sites. So, the power purchase agreement establishes that the system must generate at least ninety-five percent of the agreed-upon expected annual energy output, so that's a guaranteed amount that they must provide. The county will pay less than our normal standard utility rates, which is how we're going to save money over the contract term, at about nine cents for Hernwood over the twenty-five year term, and there are renewal options for additional terms for three years, and five years as well. Those are optional. For the five-year term, the last term, the price will be set at fair market value or mutually agreed-upon rate. We will save costs over the contract term of about thirty-six million dollars for Hernwood, assuming, of course, that ninety-five, ninety-five percent guaranteed output rate. So, upon execution of the lease, the property becomes subject to real property taxes and personal property taxes. The pilot agreement, the payment in lieu of taxation, will allow the county to purchase energy at a reduced rate in lieu of property taxes being absorbed into our higher contract rate. The resolution authorizes the county to enter into a minimum twenty-five year agreement, talked about that on, on the commercial operation date, and the payment amount is going to be eight thousand, seven hundred and ten per megawatt, that's the energy produced per year, that's for Hernwood. The property owner will make payments on July one of each calendar year, and will be subject to payments as long as they're not in default, they're still in the agreement. So, the Code of Maryland, the property article, provides that the county may enter into the payment in lieu of taxation for a solar project. And the next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing for the other, the other site, Parkton, I can read that as well. So, the resolution will take effect upon passage by the council.
Okay, Councilman Quirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a real quick question. So, so did I understand you right that the, the rates could fluctuate in the, the farther out of the contract they go, the rates will fluctuate more?
For the ener, and the energy contract? No, they're going to be set at this point, so.
They'll be set for how many years will they?
Twenty-five years.
And then after the twenty-fifth year, then they'll start to fluctuate with wherever the market's at?
For the, we have an optional three-year, we can extend to pretty much the same contract rate. Then the additional five years is going to be at fair market value upon negotiation, but we're not exercising those additional terms at this point. That would get us to thirty-three years, and I don't know that we want to do that. The twenty-five years is the contract we have at this point.
It's creative. It's definitely a, it's something we don't see often, so that's, it's interesting approach. Cool. Thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, the, the county owns this, this land, correct?
Correct.
We lease to the solar company. We agree to buy the electricity back from, from them.
Yes.
And what, what's, what is our benefit? I just want to sort of dumb down so the Dundalk guy can understand it up here. So, what is the benefit to the, the county in, in the pilot?
So, the benefits to the county in the pilot is that the developer will have a set amount they're going to pay in lieu of the taxation. They'll be able to plan according to that set rate, and it will not fluctuate. So, that's one of the benefits.
Okay, so if the county's tax situation changes, theirs, theirs won't?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, because the county owns the property, I understand, we can lease it to them, therefore it becomes taxable. The property becomes taxable. Would the county consider that with a privately owned piece of property?
Privately.
Or propose to put a solar farm on? Would we enter into a PPA with a private company and, and exercise the same type of agreement?
We would then have to get rights to that land. This is not currently our land.
Okay, so in order to do a pilot, the county would have to own the land?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, that's, I don't know if that's consistent with, when we've done more traditional real estate pilots. Mr. Blades, I see your anxious.
We would not have to own the land for a pilot. We have done other pilots for, just as an example, like an apartment complex, a store renovations, or something along those lines for a pilot. But I think it would be a case-by-case basis. I can't, I don't think we can give you a specific answer to your question at this time.
Well, in this industry, we would have to do a PPA in order to do a pilot, just because of the nature of the industry, right?
Right, we would need some sort of contractual agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you were asking about the pilot in the context of the PPA.
No, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Quirk?
It's one of the, I do like this idea a lot. I like the creativity, too. But did we, did we have to, do we go out and competitively bid the power purchase agreement on this, or?
Yes, we went out and bid.
I like it, I like it. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
I don't live far from there. I hope the kids who ride the dirt bikes don't mind.
They won't. I know they do that, but we're, we don't love that, but we like when people walk through with horses, and they're peaceful. But we do get some of the ATV people going through there. It's not the best thing, but it's close to the Patapsco Park, so that's why we have that situation.
Oh, yeah. Any additional questions, comments? Okay. Give me one second. Is there a motion to approve Resolution sixty-four dash twenty-one?
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on Resolution sixty-four dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
As have it, Resolution sixty-four dash twenty-one is passed. Mr. Secretary, next item, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-one. This is a similar resolution to the one you just passed. It would authorize an agreement, in this case, with Solarstar Parkton LLC.
Okay. Mr. Bluman, go right ahead.
Yeah, similar resolution, twenty-five year agreement, in this case, it's Solarstar Parkton, but it's the same company. So, it's the payment of lieu, in lieu of taxation for real, which is the land property, and personal, which is the equipment, at the closed Parkton landfill and other capped landfill site. It'll be effective upon the commercial operation date, same, same date roughly. They're going through the project planning, so that might alter slightly. So, we've entered into the power purchase agreement, so that's based on a dollar per kilowatt hour for energy. So, nineteen acres at Parkton. And then the guaranteed performance, they need to perform to ninety-five percent. We're paying less than we would on our standard electricity rate, so we're saving and we're getting the green energy, so it's a dual benefit. We have options for a tw, for a three-year additional term, and a five-year beyond that that are totally optional at this point, and we would save significant costs over the term, nine point five million dollars for this site. So, it becomes subject to real property tax and personal. So, similar, similar situation here. And the payment amount is nine thousand, six hundred and thirty per megawatt peak per year for this site. And they'll be required to make the payment on July first of each year. So, the Code of Maryland Tax Property Article, Section seven, five, fourteen, provides that a county may enter into an agreement with the owner of a solar project that is located in the county for a negotiated payment in lieu of taxation. So, similar.
Thank you.
It'll take effect upon passage by the council.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilman Quirk?
Just very briefly, hey, I just want to say good job on this. I like the thinking behind it, I like the creativity, and I, I, I like this, so good, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on six, on Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
As have it, Bill sixty-five dash, no, Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-one is passed. Mr. Secretary, next resolution, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-one. This is a resolution at the request of the administration, I'm sorry, sixty-six, and is also sponsored by Councilman Quirk for the, to support the designation as, of Harbutis as a sustainable community.
Councilman Quirk?
Yeah, just super briefly, just appreciate the work of the Execs Office helping here, planning, and Brian Morris from my staff, and with Gridar Butis Business Association, Beteen, and the whole group that have been pushing for this, sustainable communities, something really important. We really want to keep the revitalization happening, especially, really a lot of focus in this area. I know Wade has some, some tie-ins to this area, so that's an easy, easy second vote here. But just, I really do appreciate all the work that went into this, from whether it was planning, or whether it was from the community or the business association. Just something that we definitely need continued focus here, and I think this will help, just as we've seen the different sustainable communities have made off Winter's Lane and Paradise area as well. So, just ask my colleagues for their support. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just my, my wife grew up in Arbuthis, went to Arbuthis Elementary and Middle and Catonsville High. Is it, isn't Arbuthis Elementary the oldest?
Yeah, I think it's one of the oldest, if not the oldest. It's a, and it's a great, it's a great community. Everybody says Catonsville's very active in District One, but I'll tell you, Arbuthis, they keep me as active, if not more. I know I'll even be with them Memorial Day doing their, their annual flag raising, and yeah, it's just a great, great community.
The only thing they're missing are bakeries. They used to have a load of great bakeries, but they're all gone.
Yeah.
It's great, great community.
It is, indeed.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Resolution sixty-six dash twenty-one?
I'll move it.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on Resolution sixty-six dash twenty-one.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
As have it, Resolution sixty-six dash twenty-one is passed. Councilman Quirk, what was it? Was it Catonsville Bakery that was on, was it on Evanson Avenue?
Catonsville Bakery, yeah.
That was very nice.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've had a couple of really nice ones, yeah.
Now I have to go down to Miss Desserts on Hollins Ferry Road.
There was Gerbert's, and.
Yeah.
There's one right next to the movie theater.
Leo's.
Yeah, Leon.
Mr. Secretary, next item, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next is Resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-one. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Marks and would establish the Honey Go Gateway Commercial Revitalization District.
Councilman Marks?
Simply the companion piece to Bill forty-six twenty-one.
Okay, is there an amendment? One amendment?
There is one amendment, Mr. Chairman. The original map, Exhibit A, to accompany the resolution describes the, or illustrates the area of the Commercial Revitalization District as sort of a triangle of Bel Air Road, Honey Go Boulevard, and Forge Road. The, the amendment would actually amend the map to include an area along Bel Air Road just northeast of Germantown Way that is owned by BGE, and I believe is potential subject to redevelopment.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on the amendment.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins? Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
As have it, amendment is passed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-one as amended?
So moved.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, please call the role on Resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-one as amended.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins? Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
As have it, Resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-one as amended is passed. Mr. Secretary, next item, please.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Resolution sixty-eight dash twenty-one. This, this resolution would approve the continuation of the state of emergency for introduction only this evening, or this afternoon.
Okay, next item, Mr. Secretary?
Next is Resolution sixty-nine dash twenty-one. This would authorize, this is a resolution that would authorize the expenditure of non-local funds to CCBC for introduction only.
Next item, Mr. Secretary?
Next is Resolution seventy dash twenty-one. This resolution would also authorize the expenditure of non-local funds to BCPS.
Thank you.
For intro.
Next item, Mr. Secretary?
Sorry. And then finally, for introduction only, is Resolution seventy-one dash twenty-one. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Marks and would amend the Perry Hall Community Plan.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come before the council?
There is no further business, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, as is customary, we normally give everybody an opportunity to speak. Is there anybody signed up?
There's no, there's no one signed up, Mr. Chairman. We, that's the one meeting of the year that we, we don't follow that custom.
Okay.
So, my apologies.
No, that's okay. Well, if somebody was here, we'd give a chance. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful weekend, be safe, and talk to you real soon.